Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to tonight's Committee of the Whole Meeting. The meeting is called to order. Let the record show that all the aldermen are present this evening. And we have a bunch of people in the back. Folks, Item 2A is to administer the oath of office for firefighter Joel Mulbrandon. Firefighter Mulbrandon, if you could, sir, join us at the podium. We'd like to introduce you to not only those who are present, but of course, the entire community who's tuning in. I think you've been advised that this is live television.
(laughing) I have now.
It's true.
There's a camera over both flags, and there's a camera directly behind you, so... That's my good side.
That's the good...okay. Now, you have some guests with you this evening as well, don't you?
Yes, sir.
Would you like to introduce your guests?
Uh, I have my, uh, my mother, Marilyn Davis, and my, uh, stepdad, Donnis.
Welcome. Now, I've got a cheat sheet about you.
Yeah.
And it's pretty extensive. It's very impressive. It says here, "Your favorite food is deep-dish pizza."
Yes, sir.
From Giordano's.
Absolutely.
Why?
Uh... (laughing) No vegetables.
Oh, is that right?
Uh, yes, sir.
Did he never like vegetables, Mom?
Yeah, not much.
Not much? You're a fan of the Cubs, the Blackhawks, the Bulls, and the Bears. No White Sox?
No, no White Sox, sir. One, one team, Chicago, come on.
Again, you're on television?
(laughing)
You try to attend at least one game per year for each team.
Yes, sir.
That's pretty cool. You grew up in the northwest side of Chicago, which explains everything. In Jefferson Park?
Yes, sir.
What high school?
Uh, I went to Maine South.
Maine South. You currently live in Wicker Park?
Yes, sir.
So you're making that lovely commute?
Absolutely, yeah.
This gentleman's on black shift, so he's working 8:00 AM to 5:00... Thanks for your support. (laughing) So you ma...they're all leaving?
They're all...
So you're making the commute?
Yes, sir.
Wow. You achieved your paramedic license in 2013, basic operations firefighter certificate in 2015, you worked in sales before becoming a firefighter?
Yes, sir.
Would you like to share with us your experience in sales?
In sales, uh, I sold cell phones, and then I worked for Best Buy as a manager of their home theater department, and then I worked for an architecture firm designing low voltage systems.
Really?
And, uh, yeah, and then, uh, decided I'd rather do something else and serve my community, so I started the process of becoming a firefighter.
Have you always thought of firefighting?
Uh, yeah, since I was younger. When I was younger, I applied for, uh, City of Chicago, everything like that, and I just did these, uh, sales jobs as like, you know, temporary till I got hired there, and...
Sure.
Uh, that wasn't, you know, coming about, so I started the process of becoming a suburban firefighter.
Well, that's pretty cool, man. So with respect to the home entertainment system and the system that's currently at the firehouse, how do you rate that?
(laughing) The, the, it is sufficient, sir, yes.
It's sufficient. Because you get three channels now, you know that, don't you?
The knob's broken.
Ten, ten, yeah, yeah, ten, ninety-nine, and nothing. Paramedic lifeline ambulance from 2011 to 2014. You were a paramedic in the town of Cicero, 2014 to 2017. 2015 to 2017, you were Central Stickney Fire Department. January through April of 2017, career firefighter in Madison. Who knows where Madison, Illinois is?
Waysouth.
Waysouth, yeah, yeah. Very good. You enjoy golfing and riding motorcycles in your free time. Do you own a bike?
Yes, sir.
What kind?
I have a, uh, 2006 Harley.
Harley, you do? Is it all decked out?
Uh, it's, it, it looks pretty good, yeah. I got some chrome, some flat black, it's, it's a good-looking bike.
Really?
Yes.
You know, Alderman Burghardt drives the same thing.
(laughing)
Do you ri...do you drive it to work?
No, sir.
You don't drive it on the highway?
Uh, yeah, I do, but I haven't, it's been too cold to drive it to work.
Oh, I see, okay. What else should we know about you, sir?
Uh, what else would you like to know, sir?
Which one's your attorney? You told me all good things about this guy. And how did you come to the city of Geneva and the fire department in particular?
Uh, I came to the city, uh, they were holding a test, and I tested here. Uh, I had a friend who had, knew some people on the department, and he said it was a great department to work for, so...and, uh, I have a friend who, uh, used to work in town, and he said it was a great town to be in, so...
That's cool.
I'm excited to be here.
Do you listen to everything your mother tells you?
Yes, sir.
Did she give you any advice this evening?
Uh, no, not really, no, not yet, or, she did not give me any advice this evening.
Are you ready to have the oath administered?
Yes, sir.
May I do the honors?
Uh, yes, sir.
Great. By all means, invite who you'd like to join you, so...Mom? Can I hear what's going on up there?
Uh-uh.
You don't give me a radio? I'm gonna kindly ask you to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Joel Mulbrandon.
I, Joel Mulbrandon.
Correct. Mulbrandon, having been appointed to the office of firefighter in the city of Geneva...
Having been appointed to the office of firefighter in the city of Geneva.
County of Kane, F. Horseth.
County of Kane, F. Horseth.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Illinois...
The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
The Geneva Code of Ordinances...
The Geneva Code of Ordinances.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties...
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of firefighter, reporting to the best of my ability.
Of the office of firefighter, to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
The mom's gonna pin our newest firefighter's badge on, and there's a story behind this badge, isn't there, Chief?
There is a story behind this badge, to the top. So, those who watch old movies in harm's ways, Henry Fonda and, uh, John Wayne, remember when John Wayne was promoted to Admiral, they didn't have any stars ones, it was a quick one, so Admiral Nemo's, Henry Fonda gave his old stars. So on the honor of that movie, since we didn't get this badge in time, this is my firefighter's badge. And you will, uh, use that for your...
Does it say Chief?
That's the same, Chief, it's got the name off. Sorry, it's the new shirt. So, it's got a little history in it. It's got a little concave in this, it was run over by Intuit or so, but now it'll be in it.
Thank you, sir.
Just sign here for me?
Thank you.
I've got one more for ya. And right there. Great, thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Firefighter Mulbrandon, your mom says she's taking you out to dinner tonight, so whatever you choose, enjoy.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Item 3, ladies and gentlemen, is to approve the Special Committee of the Whole Minutes from April 17, 2017, and the regular committee of the whole minutes from April 24, 2017. Is there a motion?
Second.
Alderman Kilberg makes the motion, Alderman Marx makes the second. Any questions or comments regarding the minutes submitted? A voice vote would be sufficient. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item 4A, items of business, recommend approval of special event application for the Fox River Trail Runners Summer Sunset 5K on July 26, 2017.
So, snake?
That's anticipation...
So moved.
The runner makes the motion, Alderman Cummings?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Bruno.
The non-runner.
The non-runner. There's nobody present this evening, so I think it's pretty straightforward. Any questions or comments regarding the application? Now, Jamie's present this evening, so...Alderman Kilberg?
Uh, this event, I think, has been taking place for over almost twenty years. It's not more than twenty years, and always in July, and, uh, the Fox River Trail Runners, the proceeds, I know, help the, uh, the, uh, the high school.
We have a motion by Cummings, a second by Bruno. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Item 4A passes unanimously. Item 4B is to recommend approval of special event application for the multi-sport men's youth triathlon on May 28, 2017.
So moved.
Alderman Cummings?
Second.
The enthusiasm on the second, sir?
Yeah.
Now, how long has this been going on, duh? Forever?
Uh, forever. My kids ran the very first one or two or three of these, and it's, my kids are really old.
Seventeen years, yeah.
Your kids are really old?
Really old.
Of course, we had an Olympian run it, too.
Yes, we did.
Yeah.
Same age group as my, I think, as my son, which made life difficult for my son.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item 4C is to recommend draft resolution, authorizing surplus declaration for a 2009 Ford Expedition and 2008 Chevrolet Impala, and the purchase of two Ford interceptors from Morrow Brothers Ford State Purchase Program in an amount not to exceed $72,590.
So moved.
Motion by Bruno?
Second.
Seconded by Marx. Are there any questions or comments for Chief of Police, Mr. Professor Riley?
I just have one, and it's, it's not for the chief, nah, it's going, Stephanie, in there, we said the proceeds from the, um, from the sale of the, uh, two cars that we just declared surplus was going in the general fund. Don't we normally put that into the fund to replace this equipment, or did we change that policy?
No, we, typically, we funded this with, um, sale of real estate.
Oh, okay, so we don't do those?
But I'll, I'll double-check.
I, I didn't know, it might not be a bad way to replenish that.
And, and, it's kind of one in the same, because the way we fund the capital equipment fund is with a transfer from the general fund.
Okay.
So it all automatically kind of ends up in the same pot.
I just thought when we sold everything, we put it in there, but that's fine, thank you, that's all.
Anyone else, any questions for either Stephanie and/or the chief? We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item 4D, as in David, is to recommend draft resolution authorizing the waiver of bidding process and purchase of census water meters for fiscal year 2017, 2018, in an amount not to exceed $300,000 for meters and ERTS combined. So moved. Alderman Marx makes the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Burghardt. Questions or comments for Director Babica and/or Superintendent Van Gescam? There were a couple emails back and forth today regarding this matter, so I believe those were sufficiently answered. Alderman McGowan?
Just thank you, Mayor, just to clarify for anyone who may be watching or listening at home, um, can someone explain why we are waiving the bidding process for the purchase of the water meters?
Yes, great question. Superintendent Van Gescam, would you like to address that?
Hi, evening. Uh, when we, uh, looked to, uh, purchase our meters, we made a decision about seven years ago. We went through a thorough evaluation of different water meters and, and types of water meters that would work for, uh, Geneva, and we evaluated it based on the life expectancy, the, um, uh, the cost, and also the accuracy, and based on that, we decided that census was a, a good fit for Geneva. When we go through this process, we, um, there's a territory representative, so it's not like we can get census meters from multiple places. So we get it from one individual or, or one warehouse, uh, that we can purchase those from in, in our territory. So that's why we waive the competitive bidding for the census meter. Instead of going out for bids for each year, let's say, to get the low bidder, um, we want to stay away from, uh, having multiple meters varieties in the city. Uh, they come with, uh, different types of parts, apparatuses that go, uh, alongside the meters to make up the sizes and spreads that we have within the city. So it's, we don't want to have multiple pieces of equipment and spare parts within our inventory. We try to reduce that. The other major reason is anytime that we put a water meter into the system, it has to go into the billing system also. So as you can imagine, if we have, uh, six different sizes of water meters, they all have to be in there as, let's say, Badger or Census or, uh, any other type of meter. So what we try to do that way is eliminate the, the billing errors that can occur with multiple types of meters. So that's why we try and stick with, with one type of water meter. As long as it's competitive, uh, price-wise, uh, they've been very good to us as far as their responsiveness on meters that have gone bad, the area rep has been very good that way. So we've been very pleased with them, as long as the price stays, uh, you know, uh, competitive, uh, within the market, we like to stick with one meter.
Thank you.
So, you're welcome.
Mr. Mayor, when this matter comes before the city council at the city council meeting, because of there's a waiver of the bidding process, or if this were a sole source, uh, item, it's gonna require a two-thirds vote of the alderman holding office in order to do that. First of all, exceeds the $20,000 statutory requirement for competitive bidding, but when you're going to waive that competitive bidding, then you need to have that waiver endorsed by two-thirds of the alderman, affirmatively endorsed by two-thirds.
Assuming that this may very well be, well, I shouldn't say that, if in fact, this is a unanimous decision by the committee tonight, it will still remain on the omnibus agenda. Okay. Any additional questions or comments for either the city attorney, Mr. Van Gescam? Hearing none, seeing none, just for the benefit of all of us, let's, uh, take a roll call vote on that.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tara Burghardt?
Aye.
Donald Cummings?
Aye.
Becky Ruby?
Aye.
Dean Kilberg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Mark?
Aye.
Gene McGowan?
Aye.
Jim Rodecki?
Aye.
Robert Swanson?
Aye.
Item 4E passes, excuse me, item 4D passes unanimously, therefore, it will appear on the omnibus agenda at next Monday evening's city council meeting. Item 4E is to recommend draft resolution authorizing the waiver of bidding process and purchase of polydine polymer for wastewater treatment plant for fiscal year 2017, 2018, at a cost of $1 per pound, at a total cost not to exceed $96,000. Is there a motion? So moved.
Second.
Bruno made the motion, and Marx made the second. The same ramparts that the city attorney referenced will apply to this as well. Are there any questions for either Mr. Van Gescam, the city attorney, or the city administrator? Seeing none? Hearing none? We'll take a roll call vote, if I may.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tara Burghardt?
Aye.
Donald Cummings?
Aye.
Becky Ruby?
Aye.
Dean Kilberg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Mark?
Aye.
Gene McGowan?
Aye.
Jim Rodecki?
Aye.
Robert Swanson?
Aye.
Item 4E passes unanimously, therefore, it will appear on the omnibus agenda. And again, anything that appears on the omnibus agenda can be removed by either a city council member and/or any member of the audience, for that matter. Item 4F is to recommend draft resolution accepting a grant of property, that property being the north side of Bridger Road, from the Todd L. Dempsey Declaration of Trust. Is there a motion?
So, second.
Rodecki made the motion, and Alderman Marx made the seconds, second. As you noticed in your packet, this matter was construed or considered to be primarily a housekeeping issue, uh, for failure to properly record the land some 25 years ago in 1992. So in essence, we are recording that land through this action. Alderman Bruno?
Uh, so that's a pretty substantial parcel, but, uh, how, I know we're, we're already maintaining the road, we've also been, been maintaining the parcel itself, mowing and that sort of thing. Thank you.
Alderman, um, oh, excuse me, City Attorney Radovich is here to answer any questions. Of course, Director Babica, and I believe we might have some residents here as well, uh, by all means, join us, and we ask that you just share your name, and if you'd be so kind, your address. Thank you.
My name's Amy Ahern, I live at 556 Shepherd Lane in Fisher Farms. Um, I'm here to express my concerns about the Prairie Wayns apartment complex, which is what this land is supposed to be given for. Um, as Gene was in for 13 years, I'm surprised that Gene would even think this complex would be a good idea for the residents. The city will receive very little benefits from the complex. St. Charles will receive a lot, lot from this complex. Geneva is assuming that the residents will shop in Geneva and dine in Geneva. The impact of this complex would outweigh the assumed tax dollars the complex would bring in. In 2014, when the intergovernmental agreement was signed, did the city of Geneva know that St. Charles wanted to put in a 250 apartment complex? Did, did we know this already, when we did this? The traffic study that was done in November 30th, 2017, therefore, it doesn't actually depict the pedestrian traffic during the summer, spring, and early fall. This is a very popular area for walkers, runners, and bikers. Adding 250 plus more cars in that area is really putting the people's lives at risk. Also, the spring and fall, there's a lot of soccer traffic on Bridger, which was also not accounted for in the study. I'm assuming that everyone has a copy of the study. In order to pass this, you should have a copy of the traffic study. On page four of the traffic study, it assumes the new traffic generated by the proposed development will not negatively impact the operations of the singleized intersection of Bridger on, on the east due to the additional com, the additional capacity along the roadway and singleizing the intersection. Therefore, the intersection at Bridger and Randall Road was not included in the study, but the concerns are the intersections of Bridger and Geneva Commons and Bridger and Randall Roads. That's where the traffic impact will be. It will not be at Camden, where they did the traffic study. That's not where the traffic's gonna be. Anyone that's driven down Bridger during the holiday hours knows that sometimes you have to sit there for three lights to get to Randall from Fisher Farms because of the amount of traffic going through that area, and you're adding 250 plus more cars in that area during the holiday season. On page seven of the traffic study, there was, there was another proposal of the land develop, project in the vicinity of the site, saying that there was no other place in that area that's being developed, when that's not true, because down the street, there is still construction on, for the townhouses and houses. It was not also in the impact of the traffic study. On page 11 of the traffic study, during the AM, the AM peak hours, they said that majority of the traffic would be heading east, and I would like to know how Geneva plans on, uh, making sure that traffic's actually gonna be flowing, because again, sometimes you're waiting three lights to get through there. Um, the traffic study also says it wasn't necessary to have a right turn lane, but I understand they're gonna put one in. Are they gonna put one in, in both entrances? Um, 'cause it says 40% of the future residents will use a second entrance. How long should residents of Fisher Farms be inconvenienced with the construction that's gonna be done on Bridger, when this is all for St. Charles? Was there a study done about the impact this complex would have on the coyote population that calls that land home? Weekly, we hear the coyotes in that area. I don't think any thought was put into that as well. When the plan, plan shows an emergency exit between Meyer and Lowe's, this will be, was this actually gonna be an exit? Because if it would, then it would ease some of the traffic on, on Bridger. And in the, in our, in the intergovernmental agreement, it does not say that they can't use that exit. And in Randall Square, they use a shopping center exit as one of their exits out of their, of their complex. So I think we should utilize that as well. Will Geneva be providing more police presence on Bridger Road with this more traffic, and also on Fisher? Because when traffic gets tough on the area, people cut through on Fisher. And that road, which is 30 miles an hour, actually gets more like 50 with people driving there, and there is a lot of pedestrian traffic in the area with down the road path around there as well. In conclusion, the traffic study is incomplete, therefore, unless the council votes without all correct information, this right-of-way should not be passed by Geneva. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Are there any questions or comments from the dais for either Mr. Babica and/or our city attorney, Mr. Radovich? Alderman McGowan?
Well, first of all, I want to thank you, Amy, for your comments. I live in the Fourth Ward, and, um, my children used to play soccer, so just having lived in the area over 11 years, I'm very familiar with the traffic patterns and the difficulty. Um, and so the pedestrian tra, and traffic safety is really a big concern of mine. Um, and I know that adding a large development, um, north of Bridger Road will certainly not make it things any easier. However, I think we need some clarification now, um, regarding what in fact, Geneva can do as a council to, in this situation. I think there might be some, you know, I hate to say like a misconception, but I think we need to kind of clarify what the, what the facts are, what, what we, what we are able to do in this situation, what we aren't able to do. So could someone, maybe Rich, address some of those, um, those questions that have been raised here?
Mr. Babica, do you wish to, you are well-versed on the traffic study, of course. Um, I think for clarification purposes for the council, and certainly for those tuning in, as all of us know, the city of Geneva owns all of Bridger Road, from the south end to the north end. We maintain that roadway. This issue tonight is strictly deeding the property appropriately under our jurisdiction, and then granting that access as part of the overall development. Um, a question was asked of me, you know, could we deny this? The short answer is no, we can't, uh, 'cause it's part of the intergovernmental agreement. Um, it is a, I think, I don't know if the proper term is, it's, it's allowed by right, but it's certainly something allowed by negotiation. That's why we had someone else review St. Charles' traffic study, to in fact, affirm that it was accurate and it was, um, reasonable. Our third-party consultant, Brent Coulter, reviewed that traffic study and said, in fact, yes, it is, therefore, those additional improvements are not warranted at this time. Mr. Babica, did I leave anything out, or?
No, that, that's a pretty concise reply. I think I need to clarify a few things. First of all, when there's an annexation of land by a municipality, and that happened when Fisher Farms was annexed to the city back in the mid-'90s, um, as a, as a matter of law, under the Illinois Municipal Code, township roads, uh, will automatically come within the jurisdiction of the municipality. So, I'm pretty sure as a township road became a city road. Ownership, uh, I guess I would clarify the mayor, ownership isn't really accurate, it comes under the control and, and maintenance of the municipality. However, what happened in 2004 was that, uh, and even prior to that time, there were actually some deeds that were transferred from, um, the shopping center owners or land owners, and that would be the Meyers, as well as the Geneva Commons site conveyed the roadway, the right-of-way to the city of Geneva. There were quickclaim deeds of, from, uh, the Fisher family when Fisher Farms occurred. So with this apartment development, the property owners, Mr. Dempsey, discovered that his property I suppose if the roadway ever went away, city of Geneva would have a nice strip of land that it would own because it's not a dedication. It's not a dedication to the city of Geneva, it's an actual conveyance of the ownership. So if, if the roadway were to go away, the ownership would remain with, with the city. So it's, it is a housekeeping and it's been 20 some years that this condition has been existing. In 2001, there was an intergovernmental agreement between the city of St. Charles and Geneva that affected not just Fisher Road west of Randall Road, but also Fisher Road east of Randall Road, basically from the intersection of Route 38 and Fisher Road for the improvement. And both cities cooperated in the supervision and in some cases, the cost. And under that intergovernmental agreement, the cities indicated where curb cuts would occur along that roadway. And this parcel that is being developed or seeking development in St. Charles was one of those parcels. And so I, Rich, I guess the question is, this is just a refinement of that curb cut request?
Correct.
Or it's, it's detailing the curb cut request because when the intergovernmental agreement was done in 2001, it's a vacant land, there was no plans for development at that time.
Yeah, the, the intergovernmental agreement allows the city of Geneva to review and make recommendations and requests of the development and as long as they comply with generally accepted engineering practices as well as various federal regulations regarding tapers, deceleration lanes, and things of that nature. And as part of that review process, we were able to secure a deceleration lane for the westbound movement on Fisher Road for the eastern entrance, as well as ensuring that turn bays were installed at both entrances, striped turn bays for the eastbound movement into both the east and west intersections. The traffic counts did not support the need or require the need for the dedicated right turn movement into the western entrance. The traffic count simply did not exist. I think it's also important to note that these are private streets. These are not city of St. Charles streets. There is no connectivity to the parcels to the north or to the west of them. And the original design, which called for an emergency vehicle access into the Fisher Commons, I believe, shopping area, has now been redesigned into just a pedestrian access only. There is no design or allowance for emergency vehicles. So the, the two access points will be the east and the west access point. The developer feels that the split of 60/40 is justifiable because of the clubhouse, as well as the offices, as well as all the mailboxes are congregated at the eastern entrance. So even if you live at the western edge of this development, you still would have to access the eastern entrance to acquire your mail, partake of the clubhouse, pay your rent, whatever the issue may be.
I, there's one more comment. I forgot about another agreement. There is a boundary agreement between the city of St. Charles and Geneva. Actually, it was renewed, I think, in, recently, yeah, 2014. There's been an agreement for, I think, at least 45 years between the two cities, which establishes a boundary line. And that Fisher Road happens to be the boundary line until it reaches the Judicial Center, the east side of the Judicial Center property, and then it goes north to 38 and then further west out to, I think, to Pecker Road. Under that boundary agreement, each city agrees not to seek annexation of land on the other side of that line. It does not prohibit a challenge for zoning or land use. But I, I can't, in my recollection, recall any time that either city has objected to the activity of the other city as far as zoning or land use. I'll stand corrected, but I, I don't recall.
Alderman Deki?
Just a couple of quick questions. One, they're not, the city's not going to have to follow the streets and have to follow them.
Correct. Those, St. Charles people, are you, you're first, those, those will be private roads.
Second thing is, do we know, and I don't know if anyone knows the answers, how long that property's, first of all, what the zoning is and how long that current zoning has existed for that property?
I have no idea. I can't answer that question.
Yeah, I think it's. I, I guess it's, it's interesting, you know, going forward, just as a point of edification. Municipalities historically or typically as they develop, if you think about where our industrial park is, it's on the far eastern edge of our town. And if you, if you look where certain developments are, you, you can usually see the, the demarcations between towns by where service stations are built sometimes. If you look at the recent discussion around the Campana Building, where that's located, it's near the boundary of us. So is this. There's a, there's a pattern of development, I think, and I, whether by design or, or what that certain municipalities have. Some of the, you know, more impactful designs that they have, they do not put in the center of their towns. They put them out on the outskirts of their town. So it's just a comment of a, you know, worry to the wise that when you do have a property and it abuts to another community, that that's always something that, that's a possibility when the development does go in. So it's no comfort to you, but I think it's something that's a pattern that you, you do see in development. So, thank you.
I think to Alderman Deki's point, it's worth noting, I'm certain that everyone on the council is well aware of this. Lincoln Square subdivision in Geneva was rezoned to allow for residential because it was in fact zoned commercial. So to your point. Alderman Cummings?
So I understand sort of the broad thought that St. Charles doesn't need our permission, so to speak, to go ahead and do the things that they're going to do. But do they need this conveyance? And if, if they need this conveyance and there's still a worry about traffic, then perhaps we should hold off on the conveyance, ask for one more hard look at some of the issues that've come up and, and then convey. Or, or, I don't, I don't, I don't know a term other than like a, a gentleman's approach, but talk to St. Charles and say, there are some pretty strong feelings we're getting. Can you take a hard look at this? Are there any other alternatives?
Well, I, I think there's this clarification, Alderman. St. Charles has already approved this project. This is a cleanup matter that the property owner that conveyed it to the apartment developer is trying to undertake. It's not, as I understand, it's not a condition of St. Charles' zoning or development approval. Basically, what it does is it takes that piece of land out of the equation for the purchase, as a purchase by the developer. It's a donation, if you will, from Todd Dempsey of land to the city of Geneva. You can look at it that way because we're not paying for it.
And this is not a necessary piece of the puzzle for St. Charles to move ahead?
For the city of St. Charles?
City of St. Charles.
It's my understanding. It's not one of the conditions of their approval, which I think happened at last week.
If they approve the project and the project needs this piece?
It, it's there. The city of Geneva's already has the control of this, this right-of-way since the mid 90s. That's, that's, that's already occurred.
What I'd like to know is, have we looked at all the reasonable alternatives and, and put up that, that hesitancy that, that we're getting from the public? I got a couple emails about this to the city of St. Charles. And if the city of St. Charles and we say, we have looked at every different, every possible configuration and know there are no alternatives, then I'm, then I'm happy to vote yes. If we haven't, and by holding this up, we can have St. Charles take a second look, a hard look, and then come back, I would rather do that.
Well, we're, we're extremely limited with what we can and can't do. The intergovernmental agreement that was amended in 2014 clearly gives St. Charles the two curb cuts and even specifies that the western curb cut can be no closer than 250 feet east of Fisher Drive. Specifically states that. So when our staff did a review and we reviewed the traffic study conducted by V3, we sent that out for an independent review by Brent Coulter, the, the same firm that helped us with the road diet on Route 31. And they did an independent review and they basically verified and justified all the conclusions drawn by V3. We feel as staff that we have gotten the maximum amount of give that we can reasonably require without exceeding the standards as established within the manual and uniform traffic control devices from the Federal Highway Department, or Federal Highway Agency. So we've, we've looked at the need for the traffic signal at, at the eastern entrance. We initially requested and actually required two turn bays for both entrances. The traffic counts in the traffic study does not warrant the western entrance. So we cannot force someone to do something above and beyond what they're required to do under standard development. We looked at whether the possibility or feasibility that if these roads were going to be connected to the north and tie into Route 38. But with the declaration that they were going to become private roads, in order for those properties to the north and west to tie into those private roads, they would have to secure the permission of both St. Charles as well as the property owners, which would be the homeowners association. And with these being private roads, not being publicly supported by the taxpayers of the city of St. Charles, I would assume that there'd be a natural disinterest to have additional traffic driving through my private roads. The access to, through the Fisher Commons lot, which while at first blush may think would be a relief of traffic going through Fisher Road, and our assessment would have just the opposite effect, that it would create a natural cut-through to avoid the traffic signal at Fisher and Randall Road and encourage people to divert down through side streets and through the parking lot to avoid the traffic signal to access Fisher Road. So we have looked at the drainage impacts and made sure that they were addressed so they weren't adversely impacting the citizens of Geneva. We're requiring the developer to post an independent letter of credit with the city of Geneva to pay for the turn, turn base, as well as the additional roadwork within the right-of-way. So we're completely independent of the city of St. Charles or not behold to any of their decisions. They will also have to post a maintenance bond when the project is done, when the city council approves the acceptance of those public improvements. So we are treating everything within that right-of-way of Fisher Road, which the formalization is actually happening tonight with the acceptance of this deed, although it is not right-of-way, as aggressively as possible to ensure that the best interest, as much as we can legally require, I shouldn't say legally, but meet the standards of engineering design are being met.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else from the dais? Alderman McGowan?
Okay, so in other words, if we, well, just to clarify, if, if the council refuses to accept this grant of property this evening or anytime in the future, that really won't prevent St. Charles from going ahead with the Prairie Winds development. Is that correct? If we just indefinitely refuse to accept? And I'm, I'm just asking this for the benefit of anyone who might have this question.
Maybe a better way to clarify this is, and if I'm wrong, please correct me. We probably shouldn't be having, even be having this discussion under this item at this time. This probably should have been considered separately and the concerns that the residents had perhaps would have been better addressed under new business or a separate item because I don't know that these two things, and I think it's the way I understand it, cannot be bootstrapped together. So I think as a courtesy, we wanted to bring it up at this time and make sure that everybody's voice was heard, but is that a accurate description?
It, it's, that's my interpretation. No question about it. I've had the pleasure of corresponding with several residents in Fisher Farms. I, I try to be as clear as possible with respect to the IGA and all that kind of stuff. Yeah, the real, the, the reality is that St. Charles has the right under law to develop as they see fit. And with a boundary agreement on a shared road, we have the right to comment on the impact of that development on our roadway. We've done that. Professional staff have communicated to professional staff in St. Charles that we affirm the traffic study through our third-party consultant. Therefore, we'd like you to do A, B, and C additionally. They said okay, and we are where we are. That's my interpretation. Now, obviously, tonight's action is not formal. We have to ratify whatever decision we make at the city council meeting next Monday evening. So in that regard.
Can I ask a question, please?
Of course, please, come on up.
My name's Mary Petranic. I live at 3310 Fieldstone Drive. Um, and forgive me, I don't understand a lot about real estate and everything that's being talked about tonight, but I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
One being, what time of day was the traffic study conducted and for how long?
We're going to defer to the expert on the traffic study, Mr. Babica. It's a 70-page report and I know those times are within the report.
Yeah, give me a second. It was November 30th and it was... Almost there.
Well, Rich, there would have been AM and PM.
Yeah, it was a, it was a 24-hour period on November 30th at Camden, which was seen as an alternate, legitimate alternative to the apartment complex because it was single-family homes.
And what day of the week was November 30th? A Wednesday. So Wednesday, November 30th for 24 hours. Okay. I ask because I, I will disagree with my friend and neighbor, Amy, that there are 250 cars that typically will be impacting us. It'll be more like 500 cars if you consider, my average family has two cars per family. I, I leave my house every morning at 6:00 AM and I wait as traffic barrels down Fisher Drive so I can turn right onto Fisher Drive. And this is traffic that comes off of Britcher to avoid going to Randall Road. And they fly down Britcher to, I assume, Kaneville. Perhaps they turn out to Williamsburg, but I think they're trying to avoid a light and therefore they, if they travel straight through, they have a great shot at going from the north end to the south end relatively quickly, especially at that time of morning when there are, there's no police presence and there are no children out. But I have had to sit at that intersection at Fieldstone and Fisher for six, seven, eight cars as I wait at 6 o'clock in the morning. Adding 250, 500 more cars to the north of our subdivision that no doubt will catch on very quickly that they can fly through Fisher Farms is going to just make it that much worse. So I appreciate that, the, the place that you all are in, in terms of this, but I think that this is just something that I would like to see give some more thought to. And if a traffic study can be done on another day, perhaps in the spring, November 30th, probably not the nicest time of the year for people to be out and about, as Amy said. You know, now, this time of year, this time of night, bikers, pedestrians, walking, running, jogging, probably not so much on November 30th. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could, I would like to address, I think it's a popular misconception about what a traffic study does. Traffic studies look to seek what the peak movements are. In other words, what the highest percentage of volume of traffic is to determine when the peak times are. The traffic counts that are calculated use a nationwide standard for calculating trip generations. It's the same standard that we utilize for reviewing the Pecandale Project or we, we looked at any of the other developments within the city of Geneva. And once you determine what the peak traffic times are, which means the busiest percentile... which means the busiest percentile of the, of those movements, then using the standard formula, they're able to generate how much traffic would be generated by an apartment complex of this size using national standards. And then they factor that into the impacts of the area. So they're not actually counting vehicles themselves. They're actually counting what the highest percentage of movements are for that 24-hour period. And based off, I believe it's the 80th percentile. Based off of that, then they take their projections for everything else through there. So with a traffic study, you're not actually physically counting cars. There are traffic studies that do that, such as, for example, at stop signs or yield signs, where we're actually physically counting the number of vehicles. But in this case, with the impacts of future development, you find the busiest times percentage-wise for that 24-hour period for both an AM and a PM. And then you extrapolate out what the projections are going to be for the impacts of that development. And they also extrapolate out into what the, uh, five-year uh, traffic study is, or traffic counts, projected traffic counts for our region. And you can go out 15 or 20 years also. Uh, it's basically the same methodology that the city used on Route 31 when we did the road diet. You take the highest percentage, extrapolate out what your traffic counts are, and you work from there.
Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Director Babica, the, in your experience, have you, uh, uh, for, uh, multi-unit developments, have you have you, have you seen a reliability in, in these types of traffic studies? Or have you, have you seen traffic studies that were so far off the mark? You know, using these national standards that it surprised you?
Well, I, I think that's one reason why we went out to an independent third-party that had no, no dog in his fight, so to speak, to review the traffic study prepared by V3. Uh, V3, a reputable engineering firm, the city of Geneva has used them on numerous projects, prepared the, the traffic study and the impact study for, for their developer, their client on behalf of the city of St. Charles. Uh, in order to ensure that that information was accurate and being unbiasedly, uh, presented. We had an independent review, um, by a very respected traffic consultant within the area and who generally agreed with the recommendations and the requests of, of the V3, uh, traffic study. But one thing that they, they did identify that staff did not was to require additional right-of-way to ensure that if, um, that the, there was a proper right-of-way buffer or green space buffer on the additional side of the right-of-way, which, I'm sorry, on the additional side of the north side of the turn bay, uh, which, um, we missed when we did our review comment.
Thank you.
Yes, please. Welcome.
Thank you. So I'm Kelly Husky. I live at 622, um, Shepherd Lane and I've been in Fisher Farm for, um, for 12 years. Um, I emailed my alderman, Redeki, about this. Um, I do work full-time and travel, so I've been trying to keep up with what's going on here, but it's been a little bit of a challenge. Um, first of all, in the study, I'm not sure if it took into account pedestrians. I didn't see anything in there about pedestrian traffic. Especially in November 30th, how many of us are walking around with our weather here? We're not. We're not outside. Um, tonight, my kids bike to Lowe's down Bridger Road. Um, fine, yeah, at their ages right now, they're 13 and 14. Um, but common, another 250 to 500 cars down Bridger Roads with two more entrances and exits with cars turning either way, it's going to be quite hazardous. Um, and the backup, I think the traffic study should have been at the light where, where we put in by Lowe's and Fresh Market. I mean, that's where it backs up. That's where people avoid. That's going to be another 250 to 500 cars at that light by Lowe's and Fresh Market. We live it every day. I enter out on Bridger Road, turn towards Randall to go to work every morning and that road is quite hazardous. So you're adding 250 to 500 cars to that road. I mean, I can't imagine that's not going to increase the traffic. Anybody can figure that's going to increase the traffic. It's going to be hazardous. I don't know what agreement went, took place. Um, but why can't an alternative to an exit on 38 on the St. Charles side be considered or at least looked into? Um, the gentleman who just spoke, I think he mentioned they don't want traffic going through their private roads through their neighborhood. What do you think we want in Fisher on Fisher Drive? Um, we don't want 500 cars going down Fisher Drive at whatever mile an hour it is to catch up with Randall Road because they're avoiding three more stoplights. So, I mean, this is a huge safety hazard for our families. And if you think that it's just a shit handshake, you know, we're all just go away. I mean, this is where we live and reside. We choose to live there. We pay high taxes. And we should have a say in, in at least, please help us. Help us understand what's going on. Help us find alternatives. Help us talk to St. Charles. Why can't they talk about an exit on the St. Charles side? It's their development. It's their taxes. It, their, their money they're getting. I don't know. I mean, maybe there's a law against that, but help us understand that. Um, because it's our children that are at risk here. And they weren't walking on November 30th when the traffic study was done. And I personally, you know, anybody in their right mind would have done a traffic study at that light at Lowe's and again at the Bridger and, um, Randall Road because that light's going to be backed up as well. And if you don't think Geneva's going to have to spend resources in police, accidents, traffic directing, I mean, there's going to be, need a lot of help on that road. We already have a neighbor who canceled her home because she's backing up to Bridger Road, which is quite busy right now. So it's going to be at least twice as busy with 500 cars. In the traffic study, it said, um, they're estimating with 250 apartments, there'll be 1,663 trips that'll churn out of that, um, complex. That's with 250 cars. So do we really think there's going to be 250 cars when there's 250 apartments? I don't think so. I think there's going to be quite up to double, if not more. You know, some of those apartments could be two and three-bedroom. You could be talking two to three cars per apartment there. So, I mean, please help us understand and keep our kids safe. That's all we're asking here. And can there be a St. Charles alternative exit? One on each side, maybe. I mean, we're not, we're not trying, we're not saying, you know, let's not put this, we know we have no right in that. We know St. Charles is already building there. Like, help us, help us control the traffic so our families are safe. We're, we voted for you and we're begging you to do that. Like, please see if we can have an exit on each side. We're just asking for fairness. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Husky, would you like me to address the Route 38 access issue?
Yeah.
Uh, and I believe I may have corresponded with you regarding this as well. Um, Mr. Babica, by all means, please correct me, but the access issue onto Illinois Route 38 was at one point considered. It was then, um, pulled back simply because there's unsurity about what might be developed on that north end of the property. And therefore, why build a roadway? This is the developer speaking and I'm paraphrasing. Why build a roadway from the south end of that parcel through a undeveloped parcel letting out on the Route 38 when you don't know yet what that vacant parcel will be developed as, whether it be commercial, residential, what have you. And then you have to fit the development based on the existing roadway as opposed to vice versa. That's one of the chief reasons why the access to Route 38 was not pursued. Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
Mr. Cummings?
I, I understand that, that argument is presented. But if the developer were looking at Route 38 access, then the developer probably believed that Route 38 access would make sense. And, and looked at that and weighed the alternatives, the pros and the cons. If the developer came back and said to you, "We're not going to do this because every traffic study shows no traffic will use Route 38", I'd say, okay, I can see why they wouldn't want to put Route 38 access in. If they come back and they say "It taints the property, the undeveloped property to the north and therefore we don't want to do it", then I think that's unfair for the people that, that live in the area. We're not showing them, St. Charles is not showing them a traffic study that says it doesn't make any sense. What they're doing is saying "We don't want to slightly poison this property. We'd rather burden you with more traffic than taint this property." And that's, that's, um, I think that's worth thinking about. I think that's...
We should all be cautious about putting words in developers' mouths.
I'm just saying, whatever you just conveyed to us, that's my response. Now, it may be...
That's not my argument. That's the factual history of this development.
Yeah.
And you can look on the city of St. Charles website and see all the different machinations of this development, how it began and where it is now. That's really one of the facts.
Yeah.
And we are going to face a similar situation. While this is not germane, it's certainly worth noting. I mean, let's face it, folks, in a year's time, we're going to have the same discussion, as we all know,
Yeah.
on other areas of town bordering St. Charles and elsewhere. And there's another development being proposed at three times the size that sits on our, not technically our border, but darn close.
So one of the, the other thoughts I had is, um, I know that there's a big difference between what we can do legally and what we can do you know, over the kitchen table sort of thing. This is not the first, this is not the only time that's going to come up. This is absolutely going to come up with the, uh, traffic on Route 38. And to open up a stronger dialogue at this point, I think, um, makes some sense. And then we've got those, those channels open for the next project, which is, like you said, going to be significantly larger. So, I, I, I'm not, I'm, I'm not ready to burden residents. I'm, I'm not ready to favor an argument that burdens residents and, um, provides this untouched land to a developer. I'm not sure that that's a trade-off I want to, that I want to make, that I'm comfortable making. Um, thank you.
Anyone else on the dais? Alderman Burkert?
So what Honorin Cummings says makes a lot of sense. Except for the developer's not before us. So if the developer were before us, we could say, we're, we're not approving this unless you give the Route 38 access. We, we don't care if, you know, we're sorry it might take down your property value there, but we want the north and south access. I guess I'm struggling with what we do now and we don't, we don't have, uh, we, you know, St. Charles has already moved ahead with this, but...
If St. Charles moved ahead and if that is absolutely moving ahead and there is nothing we can do whatsoever, then there's nothing we can do. But I'm beginning to sense that we, there are some alternatives out there and that a little bit stronger dialogue should be open and that we should, that, that we should explore that again. Even if we're going back with the same argument a second time and saying, you know what, this is really important. We know we covered this X number of years ago or months ago. But, but we're getting pushed back from the residents. We're next-door neighbors. We have worked historically very well together. This is an issue with some residents. Let's circle back and look at this issue again. And if St. Charles says, "Absolutely not", then we've tried. But if they do say, you know, let, we'll, we'll go back to the table and see if we can make some changes, then everybody wins. And that, that's all I'm asking.
Alderman Maladra?
Okay, so, uh, Rich, trying to understand, we're, we're talking about this because really the only thing we can act on is an adverse impact that this development may or may not have to the city of Geneva. And we're saying that that adverse impact is measured by traffic, right? So what I need, uh, help me understand that adverse impact is to understand the area itself. So Fisher Drive is one of the streets I hear we're concerned about. What's Fisher Drive classified as?
A major collector.
How many cars a day is that major collector?
I'd have to look up on the city code. I don't have it on top of my head, but it's significant.
You're killing me, Rich. It's significant. So, so when the traffic study looks at, at the, at the traffic that's, uh, expected to be generated by this development, whether it's on November 30th or July 4th or whatever day they pick and however they model it, uh, what they're, what they're measuring it against is what? How, how that traffic can flow in and out of the area?
Correct. They're, they're looking at, again, that the highest percentage, the timeframe for the movements. And then they extrapolate out based off of the number of vehicles expected to be generated with that type of development.
And they're determining that the surrounding roads are built and classified in such a way that they can handle that volume.
They can accommodate it without a traffic signal or what improvements are needed. And the improvements that were identified were the right turn bay for the eastern entrance, the two eastbound turnbays for both entrances, as well as, um, the drainage improvements and stormwater-related improvements for those facilities.
So what I'm, what I'm kind of left with is that these roads were constructed to handle this volume of traffic. The traffic study done by the developer and the independent traffic study done by us says that the roads that were built to handle high volumes of traffic can in fact handle the traffic that's going to be generated here. So I'm not exactly sure I, I see an adverse impact, other than there will be more traffic than is currently going through that, that area. But we've seen that everywhere. In fact, our own development of the Commons probably generated more traffic going through certain areas than was there before. Uh, development of Eagle Brook generated more traffic than was going through my neighborhood before. As, as the mayor pointed out, we're going to be looking at a few developments in Geneva that are likely to generate more traffic than is currently there. It creates a problem when the traffic can't flow. Um, I am curious about the Bridger, uh, aspects. I'd like to know what the study said about that because I do believe that's a clogged artery. I can't use the word artery because that is a road classification, but I do see, I do see that it backs up there, but then I also tend to feel that traffic is like water. It's going to find the path of least resistance. And so if these people have trouble getting out on Bridger, they're going to head up to 38 down Packer or something like that anyway. So I'm, I'm, I'm left with the, the fact that the roads are built to handle the extra traffic. This, this development's going to generate traffic that's well within those limits. I don't really see the, uh, I don't really see a problem other than extra traffic that we anticipated when we built the roads is going to be there.
Uh, to your point, Craig, you know, just because the roads can handle increased traffic or the amount, the heavy amount of traffic that they already handle doesn't take into consideration what exists around those roads. And it's interesting to note that, um, Bridger Road is a new route for Geni, Geneva school buses. My daughter is on the, uh, middle school bus that now takes Bridger Road from the middle schools, uh, which service the new Lincoln Square subdivision. Um, so those school buses will also, um, they also get backed up by those lights as they approach the Commons. Once the Prairie Winds development goes in, I imagine there will be St. Charles school buses as well utilizing Bridger Road. That will be the only road that they could use, obviously, without an access point to Route 38. So, um, in addition, the, um, all of the homes east and west of Fisher Road uh, are zoned for Heartland Elementary School. So you get a lot of kids, um, out and about on a daily basis. Um, so, um, uh, and for those of you who are not familiar with Fisher Drive, um, it is like a mini-highway. Um, there aren't, it's kind of like a long stretch and a lot of people use that as a cut-through. So it's already slightly dangerous. Um, I'm not a Fisher Farms resident, but I do use that, I do use those roads a lot. Rarely do I see, um, Geneva police, um, stopping people for speeding. Now, they, they could be there. I see them all the time on Williamsburg Avenue. Um, but I just wanted to, so I just wanted to point that out. Um, there are residents there, there are children, and I think we should just focus on this. I would like to just focus on this area of the city for now. I don't want to start talking about what's on the east side or what's coming. I just want to focus on this situation right now. Because it's unique, it's right by the Commons, it's so close to Randall Road. Um, you have Route 38. So it's, it has its own unique dynamics as far as a traffic situation. My questions are... so what, if anything, can we, as a council, do in this situation, legally or just strategically? And, uh, second question is, since we do have people that are unsatisfied with the traffic study, there were a couple of points brought up, like the traffic study didn't address certain issues. What recourse is there? Can anyone answer that, those questions?
So, from one extreme, ma'am, the City of Geneva, or these residents, could file suit against the City of St. Charles, or, and the developer against that development, if that's the extreme you're looking for. But as far as enforcement of the agreements that are in place, I don't see any, any, uh, rational or legal way of doing that. The intergovernmental agreement's been in place. As far as I know, it's been abided by, by both St. Charles and Geneva. The boundary agreement has been abided by, by both Geneva and St. Charles. So, litigation by a private citizen, or by the municipality? I don't know on what basis. I'm just saying that you asked for what were the means-
Right, absolutely.
Okay.
Because I think it's important for people to know, what are the options? What are the options that we, as a council, are aware of? If any, and I'm just, I'm just, you know-
But the, but the, uh, success of any of those actions are very suspect, in my opinion. Certainly, the time for protesting in the normal due-process way has passed. The public hearings before the Plan Commission in St. Charles, the meetings have occurred. Because, uh, if I'm not mistaken, Rich, the, the, the Development Director submitted a report, or a memorandum to St. Charles in mid-April, or somewhere, maybe around the 23rd of April, indicating what the results of the Colter traffic analysis was. And they may have used that as a basis for moving forward with, um, the, their approval of, uh, the City Council of St. Charles' approval, um, last week.
I believe those comments were sent, uh, to David DeGroot's counterpart in St. Charles on or about April 29th, 28th, somewhere in that range.
So, it was before their April 1st meeting, or?
It would've, uh, it would've been April 26th, that was that one.
Somewhere in that week.
It's, it's worth noting, Alderman McGowan, and I think we all know this, the build-out schedule for this particular development is five years. Is it safe to assume that after year one, and after year two, and after year three, if another traffic study is warranted, clearly, we can conduct our own? Is there anything in the development that calls for St. Charles and/or Dempsey to request an additional traffic study halfway through the build-out phase? I'm not aware of it, but-
Not that I'm aware of. And, and again, I, I, the, the conversation has drifted a tad off-topic. I mean, the item before the City Council tonight is a matter of housekeeping.
Understood, but-
Except the title, and, and of course, if there are, there are eight different standards that would trip a signal improvement under the MUTCD. And again, it's the Manual and Uniform Traffic Control Devices. The first two, which this traffic study looked at, which are your typical triggers for an intersection, uh, signalization, were simply not met, and not met by a close margin. They were not met by even a close judgment call. There are other, uh, issues, uh, some related to peak traffic movements, such as putting a signal outside of the Sears Center in Hoffman Estates, that when you have a mass exodus of people, uh, coming out of a business park, for example, that a traffic signal is warranted because there's that peak impact on the road network. There, there are all kinds of other issues that, if the City of Geneva foresees a need, because again, I think that's also critically important, Britcher Road belongs to the City of Geneva. I mean, no ifs, ands, or buts about it. The City of Geneva owns Britcher Road. So, if there ever is a need for signalization improvements, somewhere that line, maybe St. Charles brings forth another development to the west, that's not covered under this IGA. Because again, that's the binding issue here with this Prairie Winds subdivision, is that the IGA says they get their two access points. As long as they meet the federal guidelines, they get them. So, the only question that we could do as staff is, what can we get out of them to, to ensure the maximum safety that we can get? But any other developments that need to access Britcher Road, for lack of a better word, the City of Geneva's in a driver's seat. And then we do have a lot of leverage with them. If there is ever a need for signalization improvements at Britcher and Randall Road, that's under the jurisdiction of the King County Department of Transportation. KDOC collects impact fees from every project that gets built within his, uh, within the King County, and they can use those funds to fund those traffic signal improvements, if necessary, and if warranted. So, there are a lot of future possibilities, but at, at this stage of the game, you know, the topic is clarifying this housekeeping issue that should've occurred in 1992. Most of us were doing other things at the time. So, um, this is a housekeeping issue between us and the county, their County Recorders Office, and the property owner, uh, that owns, that, that the trust from the north side of Britcher Road. I mean, that's, no matter what, we, we need to address that issue. We already maintain it. We already operate it. For lack of a better word, the citizens of Geneva have been maintaining property that they never had clear title to for the last 25 years. So, this, that's the focus of this. If, in the future, conditions warrant that additional improvements need to be done to Britcher Road, if it needs to be widened, if it needs more traffic signals, if the traffic signals need to be timed, those can all be addressed as the situation dictates. But what we're trying to do here tonight, and, and I don't wanna sound like I'm lecturing, but again, what we're trying to do here tonight is simply clean up a little bit of housekeeping, and actually, the next item on the agenda is the same thing, uh, just with the state this time. So, we can move forward and dot the i's and cross the t's and move on. It's not that we're disregarding what the, the, the residents are stating. We, we clearly understand their issues. We're doing the best we can within the constraints that we have, and we've made the most logical and heavy-handed arguments, and we feel that we've gotten the most we can possibly get out of the Prairie Winds development without being an adverse, developing an adversarial relationship with the City of St. Charles, and possibly exposing us to litigation for holding up the project. And, so, we're, we're at where we're at. And again, um, we hear what the residents are saying. We, we have some ongoing, long-term strategies and concerns, and things that we coordinate with the Police Department on, you know, traffic studies and traffic counts. And if the situation ever develops where that has to be addressed, we'll, we'll address them. That's what you pay us to do, is to represent the City of Geneva with our, the best of our abilities. I don't work for St. Charles.
Yes, please do.
And thank you, Rich. Your information and explanation has been really helpful. And so, um, I don't want you to think that you're not appreciated, or the Public Works Department isn't appreciated. It truly is. I think the fact that several of us on council, as well as I know Mayor Burns, have received, um, emails from residents in Fisher Farms that have had a lot of concerns, um, and some of whom are here this evening. I think it's important that we kind of utilize this opportunity to kind of sneak in a little discussion here. I think it's very important, especially in terms of what this discussion is about. So, um, thank you for your patience through this. And, just wanted to say that. So, again, and I'm sorry, I just need, I feel like I need more, a really, really clear answer, just for the record. If the council votes to accept the grant of property, Item F, Item 4F on the agenda, that will, whether, sorry, whether or not we accept Item F, will have no effect on St. Charles's plans for going ahead with this development. I just wanna have clarification on that for the record.
That is my understanding.
Okay, thank you.
And my understanding.
Anyone else on the dais? Or anyone in the audience? Of course.
Sorry, it's an issue near and dear to my heart, because I live there, and I understand it, but, um, I understand the concerns. I think it's, it's great to note, it's good to note, that, um, as this proposed project goes in, hypothetically, it's gonna go in, the traffic situation, the traffic patterns can be looked at again, a few years out from now. If it's a problem, you know, right now, we're just kind of, we're speculating, you know, we're making an educated guess, that it will cause a little bit more, um, like, I guess, traffic issues, but we can go ahead and do another traffic study in a few years, if we're getting feedback from residents that that's needed, and, and we can, um, just take it from there. Is that
Yes.
something reasonable? Okay, so, just so that residents understand that we're gonna, um, I guess, do that. Thank you.
That would be a budget issue. That's why I was deferring to the City of Minnesota.
But if it were to warrant it, and us to look at it, then we would look at that, and then we would seek who participates, if it requires signalization or whatever, who participates in that cost, and all of that, when the time warrants.
There was a misstatement as well. The City of Geneva did not conduct a traffic study for this project.
We reviewed the traffic study by St. Charles.
With a professional traffic consultant. Okay, so, he, he looked at what the information was, and, and Brent Colder is a predominant, uh, premen- a, a very outstanding traffic consultant in, in the northern Illinois area. Worked for both county governments, municipal governments, and private developers. So, I think his recommendation can go, um, a long ways.
Anyone else on the dais? Anyone else from the audience? Yes, please. Uh, I, forgive me for having to require you to join us at the microphone. We got-
Just so that I'm aware, traffic studies do not take into account pedestrians. Is that correct?
Typically not.
A traffic study does not take into account pedestrian traffic?
That's correct. It's, it's vehicular traffic.
Vehicular traffic only.
Well, Rich, I think they do, if, if there's school areas, crossings, all, all those kinds of, uh, uh, other activities, that's part of the, uh, analysis, but I don't think they do a count of, of pedestrians, if that's what you're talking about. If you're talking about a physical count.
In the study, it did count pedestrians. So, they were counting pedestrians. It happened to be zero, because it's the end of November. So, that's why I'm saying, this, this traffic study was not done properly. So, they did not follow the, it, the intergovernmental agreement by doing a traffic study. It's not done properly. So, we should not allow this, because they did not follow what they should've done. Pedestrians were not counted in this numbers.
Director Babica?
Ms. A. Heron is partially correct and partially wrong. The V3 traffic study did not count for pedestrian traffic, uh, as a result of this development on the north side of Britcher Road. That is correct. The assumption was that the pedestrian traffic would go through what was then envisioned as the emergency vehicle access into the commercial area, and then cross at the signalized intersection at Britcher Commons and Britcher Road. The independent review by Mr. Colter, uh, called that out as a mistake, as a invalid assumption. And as part of that recommendation by Mr. Colter, staff included that sidewalks shall be included on the north side of Britcher Road for the length of the property. That is now included in the, the design that, um, that is currently the final design. So, there, there's a partial truth and a partial, that just shows that the independent review was completely independent, and did identify weaknesses within the V3 that were later corrected.
Sidewalks exist on both sides of Britcher Road currently, or, excuse me, on the south side of Britcher Road. They will on the north side, based on the review of the traffic study. Based the recommendation via Colter.
On, on the south side of Britcher Road, it's a walking slash jogging path. It's not your classical concrete-
Part of the Fisher development, but we required it in Lincoln Square as well.
Correct, and it ties all the way into the, uh, to the western edge of the, uh, Geneva Commons.
Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I, I seem to land on this, that, uh, what we're voting on here tonight really doesn't have any bearing on whether this moves forward. It seems like we have a solid, solid options moving forward. You know, I'm not unsympathetic to traffic concerns. I know particularly at Commons Drive in Britcher, that's, I don't know what we can ever do about that. But, uh, I, I think we're making a mistake conflating this, this particular issue, this vote, with addressing any of the traffic issues. Thank you.
Anyone else on the dais? Alderman Cummings?
In answer to the, "I don't know what we can do with all the traffic at Britcher", I don't know what we can do with all the traffic. But adding to the traffic seems to, uh, not be an alternative. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, Ms. Husky? That's right.
I know our community's growing, and we have traffic problems, if are in our future. But this is St. Charles resident traffic. And I think that this is a different situation. This is St. Charles resident traffic that is gonna be dumping out into Geneva. And you're saying there's nothing we can do because of the agreement, agreement. Like, if this were Geneva, you know, residents, I'd have no problem with it. Like, we're all in this together, but these are Geneva, uh, these are St. Charles residents, and now, school buses as well will be dumping out onto Britcher, in addition to our school buses coming onto Britcher. So, I mean, I don't understand why we can't at least talk with St. Charles as a government and try to figure something out to alleviate us taking all of their traffic onto our roads. I mean, is there anything that can be done or talked about in this agreement? Yes or no? That's all I'm asking.
Do you wish for me to answer that?
Yes, I would. Does anybody know? Because it seems a little-
The, the short answer is no, madam, with all due respect. I will be happy to contact Ray Regina tomorrow, and I will share with Ray, I'll, A, invite him to watch the meeting tonight, and then I will say to Ray, "By the way, there, there's some concerns from Geneva with respect to the A, B, C, D, E, and F." And Ray will say respectfully, "Stand in line. We've already upset the Park District and the School District regarding the land cash ordinance in St. Charles. We have an intergovernmental agreement, Kevin. We have a boundary agreement, Kevin. Your staff demanded from our staff improvements based on a third-party study. We've conceded, the developers conceded. It's cost them extra money. I'm sorry, that's it." It's not unlike the, the challenges slash opportunities we have with our friends in Mill Creek. When Mill Creek built out, they're not Geneva residents, 'cause they're unincorporated Geneva.
Right, right.
But we knew that traffic was coming westbound.
Right.
So, we worked in concert with them to improve intersections, what have you. And you're absolutely right. We're gonna continue to face these challenges moving forward. Absolutely.
I think a township's a little bit different than another full-fledged city with a, I, I don't know. It's, it's a little, I think it's a little different. But I get what you're saying.
Yeah.
I get what you're saying. And I just think that, I don't know how we would've been able to, I get this has already gone through, it's gonna be built, we have to accept it, we will. I'm not sure that Geneva residents could go into St. Charles, um, you know, their meetings, and fight something going up there, and really win, um, with the, getting majority of people to travel over to St. Charles. We can't even get enough people to come here. We can get them to email you, but we can't get them to come here, 'cause people have families and stuff, but-
Of course.
First, if we, you know, I guess we can go into every city and fight things, but we're concerned with our community and, and the safety of our children, and, and now we have to take on the St. Charles traffic. So, thank you. I, I don't know what else to say.
Well, thank you.
I wish there was something more that can be done. I, I appreciate the comments, and some people thinking out loud to try to help the residents, and I just wish there were more of that. So, but thank you.
Thank you very much. Anything else, ladies and gentlemen? We have a motion? We have a second? Madam- Yeah, Rodecky and Marks made it. Madam Recording Secretary, please take the roll.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tara Burkhardt?
Aye.
Donald Cummings?
Aye.
Becky Ruby?
Aye.
Dean Kilberg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marks?
Aye.
Jean McGowan?
Aye.
Jim Rodecky?
Aye.
Robert Swanson?
Aye.
The motion passes with nine affirmative votes, one nay vote. This matter will advance to the City Council meeting on Monday, May 15th, but it will not appear on the consent agenda. Item 3G, ladies and gentlemen, recommend draft resolution for improvements by municipal, excuse me, by municipality under the IHC Projection Section Number 08-0010- excuse me, by municipality under the IHC Projection Section Number 08-00106-00-RS, revising total fund amount spent for 2008 street improvement expenditures.
So moved.
Second.
Marx makes the motion, and Swanson, I believe it was, makes the second. Questions or comments for Director Babica? Hearing none, seeing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We're at new business now, ladies and gentlemen. Any benefit for the council, or questions for the council, from anyone joining us this evening about anything? From the dais? I'll entertain a motion to go to closed session on the setting of a price for sale or lease of property owned by the public body.
Second.
Motion by Marx, seconded by Bruno. A roll-call vote is in order. There is no action being taken this evening.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tara Burkhart?
Aye.
Donald Cummings?
Aye.
Becky Ruby?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Jean McGowan?
Aye.
Jim Rodecky?
Aye.
Motion is unanimous. We will adjourn to closed session. We will return shortly. Again, no action being taken this evening. Microphones are off.